Everyone, thank you so much for being here today for the April eighth regular county council meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at nine thirty. We'll start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. First item up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? No, okay, we'll go on as per nine point eight of the procedural bylaw. We'll go around the table for councillors to identify which items on the agenda they wish to discuss. I'll list the ones that we know we have to discuss and then we'll go further. So what I have written is two point one, three point one, five point one, six point three, seven point one, seven point three, seven point four, eight point one, eight point two, nine point one A, nine point two, thirteen point one, and thirteen point two. Councillor Minns?
Well, thank you. I would like to discuss six point one, six point four. I think that's it for me now.
Six point four, okay. Is there anybody else who would like to? Councillor Anderson?
I'd like to add eight point five, please.
Eight point five, okay. Uh, councillor Hall? And eight point three as well, you mentioned? Yep. Okay.
Sorry, and did you add all of number seven?
Uh, I had seven point one, seven point three, seven point four. And I'll run through those again unless anyone else has anything further. All right, let's run through those one more time. Two point one, three point one, five point one, six point one, six point three, six point four, seven point one, seven point three, seven point four, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point five, nine point one A, nine point two, and our closed session items thirteen point one and thirteen point two. Okay, just a moment. You're okay, all right. And councillor Cromwell would like to make the motion to approve the agenda as discussed. All those in favor? Thank you, and no opposed, but be nine and oh, thank you. And at this time, we could have a motion to recess our council meeting to hold a public hearing. Councillor Minns would like to make that motion. All those in favor? Let's no opposed, so nine and oh, thank you. We are now recessed. Move on to this one, all right, so. I would like to declare the public hearing open. I'm Tracy Holland, the Reeve for Athabasca County, and I will be the Chair of the Hearing. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome you here today. The secretary of the public hearing is Bob Beck, who is the C O for Athabasca County. Any persons who have joined the meeting in person or via Zoom and are wishing to be heard should please give your full name now. And your last name, Bruno, Bruno Wisco, welcome, thank you for being here. The public hearing for bylaw zero zero four twenty twenty five is now open.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council of the County to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters and all comments must be directed to council through the chairperson. Only one person may speak at a time and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be. Land management specialist Diane Cluchet will speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Ms. Cluchet will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Councillors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only consider matters raised at the hearing. Only councillors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation, and the chair will only ask a question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Thank you. Before hearing from the public, I would ask Ms. Cluchet to provide background and explanation of the proposed bylaw.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. The purpose of bylaw zero zero four twenty twenty five is to close a portion of undeveloped road allowance that is no longer required for the use by traveling public. The undeveloped road allowance is located south of southwest three sixty-five twenty west of the fourth and north of northwest thirty-four sixty-four twenty west of the fourth, which is approximately eight kilometers west of the village of Boyle. Adjacent landowners within a hundred meters of the road allowance were mailed notification letters for this public hearing on March eleventh. An advertisement was placed in the Town and Country This Week newspaper for March eighteenth and March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. In addition, notice was placed on the county's website, which provided information regarding this public hearing for bylaw zero zero four twenty twenty-five. The proposed road closure will not affect access to neighboring properties as access is achieved from Highway six-six-three and Range Road two-three to the west highway and Highway sixty-three to the east. The intention is to consolidate the small portion of undeveloped road allowance with the property to the north southwest three sixty-five twenty west of the fourth.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or points of clarification they wish to ask Ms. Cluchet? Alrighty, are there any written materials that have been submitted? No written materials, thank you. I will now call upon the persons wishing to speak. Would you like to speak, Mr. Wisco?
Sorry, me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sure.
If you'd like to come forward, and the microphone is there for you.
So, uh, the uh, the company, Mr. V's Field and Forest, uh, owns a portion of, um, northwest thirty-four sixty, uh, sixty-five. Can't remember where it is. Anyway, it's up there. Anyway, what happens is, uh, a portion of it is taken, um, taken off the main, uh, the main block of land. It's about three acres and it's on the other side of six sixty-three. So I turned sixty-five in one month's time. So the, the, the reason I wanted to, to consolidate the land is that if I sell Mr. V's separately, which it's almost going to be the, the, the situation there, um, they're not going to be the same people that are buying the land south of the road. So I want to, I want to take the three acres and, and put it with the, the hundred and sixty acres there. I own both pieces of land. One is under Mr. V's Field and Forest, but I'm the sole shareholder of Mr. V's Field and Forest. So this would be just. If, if this is approved, then what will happen is I would buy it off of me. And, and we would have, uh, twenty-five acres of Mr. V's would be separate. If, if you could choose not to do this, then you have an orphaned property that has no access from either highway, nor is there any possible access from either highway because they're both on curves. So if you put an access on it, it would make it just really dangerous. So I, I, I mean, this just seems like this is, should be common sense, but I've been, I've been trying to get this for the last six years, I think, and no idea what's going on, but I would like to, I would like to, I would like to have it completed this year because if I retire and if I choose to sell, you know, it would be better, in best interest of everyone to have, uh, that small three acres, uh, combined with the, combined with a hundred and sixty acres that is adjacent to it.
Okay, thank you. Does council have any questions or points of clarification? No, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who has not spoken and wishes to speak? Awesome. Thank you so much. At this time, does council have any additional questions of any speaker or of the staff? Does anyone feel they have not been fairly heard? There being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing. I further advise council cannot receive any further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing. I declare the public hearing closed at nine forty A M. Now, do we need a motion to go back into the meeting? To reconvene the meeting, we need a motion to do that? No, we don't, we can just reconvene. Okay, perfect. I didn't, I was curious, but we'll go for it. All right, so after that, we are looking now into the delegation presentation, which is five point one. They are here at eleven A M. So we will move to business arising from the minutes. And that is the first item up, six point one, page one forty of your agenda. And I believe that was Deputy Reed Minns who asked to speak that one.
Uh, yeah, I, I just threw that on there just to, uh, move the motion. Uh, recommended the motion that council approved Athabasca County. Twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven communication strategic plan is presented. And I want to just give kudos to administration for, for, uh, a great, uh, communication strategic plan. Thank you very much, Jordan. You did an amazing job. And that's, that's awesome. And I just wanted to give the shout out to, to our buddy there, Jordan. So thank you very much.
Fantastic, thank you. I think we all echo those sentiments and really appreciate it, looking forward to the strategy, strategy being put into place. So thank you so very much. So I believe the motion was that council approve Athabasca County's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven communication strategic plan as presented. Councillor Minns would like to put that motion forward. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor? Okay, and no opposed, so that's nine and oh, thank you. The next item we have is the six point three, which is the Regional Community Collaboration Attraction and Engagement Group, page one sixty of your agenda. The recommendation here is to appoint one member of council to the member region, uh, one member of council to the Member Regional Community Collaboration Attraction and Engagement Group. Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you, I'd like to nominate Reeve Holland.
Thank you, I would accept the nomination. Are there any further nominations, councillor Hall?
I'd like to nominate councillor Wallack, she's been fairly involved in the act development and.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further nominations? Okay. Thank you very much. So we have three, three nominations at this time. Are there any further?
I appreciate the nomination, but I will not take it, but thank you very much.
Okay, so we have two nominations. How would, how would, uh, everyone like to do the, should we like to speak on it first and then go to a vote? Okay, well, um, I, I'm really excited about this committee as well. And so I'll, I'll just mention that, um, I think this is an awesome opportunity, uh, for us to, to be involved in. Um, and I also feel part of the job of a Reeve is to be the main spokesperson for the municipality, um, including being the liaison with senior elected officials, other levels of government and stakeholders. And this particular committee is about collaboration with key stakeholders, uh, to identify those opportunities that foster both economic and social development for the region. Um, and I do, I really think that this is an amazing opportunity and it creates a vast array of public service providers input to identify targeted collaborative, um, opportunities that foster both economic and social development for a region. Um, building strong relationships between the private sector and government, of course, is key. So and for as far as I can tell, the Community Collaboration Committee is currently being formed. Um, it encompasses a Reeve's responsibility. So I'll be more than happy to attend, participate in, and provide prompt reporting after each meeting. And of course, information sharing will always happen promptly as well. And, uh, I will include council, of course, on any decisions that council should be a part of. So this still, that's my little plug for really wanting to be on that committee.
Um, over the past three years, I've been part of the Economic Development Committee and has spent hours and days, um, building relationships with not only local officials and local um, key stakeholders, um, but the ministers and uh, all over the northeast, um, with Alberta Hub and, and developing relationships there. So uh, I feel like I have a lot of good connections in the, in the area and, um, I think I would be a great representation for that.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'll, I'll defer to C O for that.
So, section one eight five point one of the M G A says, um, despite sections one eight five and one nine seven, at a meeting at which council establishes a committee or other body under section one four five or appoints a chief elected official under section one fifty, uh, a secret ballot must be held if requested by any councillor present at the meeting. A vote by secret ballot under subsection one must be confirmed by resolution of council.
Okay, thank you. So that is the request for secret ballot. So if we, um, may go forward, I guess, or unless others would like to speak, we'll go forward with the secret ballot. Thank you. We'll just take a few minutes for, um, the secret ballots to come into the room. Alrighty, so we've reconvened our meeting and, uh, we're in the process of the ballots. I believe, once everyone is ready, if you wouldn't mind signaling, and then we will have ballots collected. Now, shall we recess the meeting once more for the ballots to be counted? Is that the best way to take this? No, we're good with it? Okay. We will wait.
Madam Chair, the vote is, uh, five Holland and four Wallack.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So, uh, in order to finalize that, we will need a motion. Someone would like, councillor Cromwell would like to make the motion to appoint Reeve Holland to the member to the Member Regional Community Collaboration Attraction and Engagement Group. Do we mention secret ballot in the motion?
Madam Chair, I'll pull it up again. It's a, a resolution to confirm the results of the secret ballot.
Okay. So we'll do that.
Just try to read that again. A vote by secret ballot under, under subsection one must be confirmed by a resolution of council.
Okay, so.
Motion to confirm the results of the secret ballot, appointing Reeve Holland to that committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Everybody has that motion. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor? Okay, and no opposed? Nine and oh, thank you. Alrighty, we move on to item six point four, water rates discussion. I believe councillor Minns had asked for that to come up.
Yes, I asked that to, to be put on, uh, for discussion, um. Uh, one, first thing I want to do is I would like to move a motion from the discussion in the committee of the whole meeting on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, that a minimum five cubic, five cubes be set for minimum use. Scenario three at six dollars per cube, uh, cubic meter, uh, hamlet and truck fills also to transfer the twenty twenty-four surplus to the water reserve. And sewer charges at Collington Grassland Wandering River set at thirty-five percent of the actual water billing. And Rochester Hamlet sewer charges stay the same at residential twenty dollars per month. Uh, commercial thirty-seven, uh, dollars, eight cents per month.
Okay, thank you. Is there discussion? Councillor Anderson and then councillor Wallack, please.
Can you repeat those, please?
Pardon me?
Can you repeat those a little bit slower this time?
You would like the motion read again? Yes, please, okay.
I'd like to move a motion from the discussion in the committee of the whole meeting on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, that a minimum five cubes be set for minimum use. Scenario three at six dollars per cube, cubic meter at hamlet and truck fills also to transfer twenty twenty-four surplus to water reserve. And sewer charges at Collington Grassland and Wandering River Hamlets set at thirty-five percent of the actual water billing. And Rochester Hamlet sewer charges at, stay the same at residential twenty dollars per month, commercial thirty-seven dollars and eight cents per month.
Thank you very much. I think every, does everyone have that now? Councillor Wallack?
Um, I guess where is this money coming out of the budget for this?
If I may, um, from our discussion that we had in the committee of the whole, it would come from the general taxation.
So are we have to cut other things or we're running out of loss? Like where, what are we cutting, I guess, to, to make up for this?
As it would be for, in my opinion, as it would be for every other service that we provide, um, it comes from general taxation. I don't believe there would be any need to cut anything. We have general taxation for that purpose.
I guess my follow-up is I'd like to see the full budget before we decide on, I'm adding an extra couple hundred thousand dollars to our loss.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? No? Okay, are we ready to take it to the question then? All right. I'm not going to try and attempt to read that motion. Oh, pardon me, councillor Anderson.
Um, I believe our water rates are set by a bylaw. So is this motion to amend the bylaw and bring it back? Or is this motion in opposition to the bylaw, I guess, because council can't just make a motion to amend a bylaw. Bylaws need three readings to be able to pass. And since that bylaw wasn't presented to us at today's meeting, I'm a little concerned about the way the motion is worded to make sure that we're reaching the target. You know, actually obtaining the result you're expecting.
Would you like to make a friendly amendment to add the words amend? Bylaw, I don't have the bylaw number in front of me, but to amend the current bylaw?
Yeah, I'm in the, the current utility bylaw.
Madam Chair, the, the motion would need to read direct administration to bring back a revised bylaw. So you can't amend the bylaw today. We'd have to bring back an amended bylaw.
For sure, okay.
Yeah, and I think that's what we've been pretty well asking for to, uh, have, have a discussion on the bylaw, but, yep, to, let's recommend to bring back a, uh, amended bylaw. Revised bylaw.
Okay. Did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to, uh, um, echo councillor Anderson. I was a little confused. I'm like, we can't just set a water rate. Uh, we need to work on a bylaw, so, huh, thank you for pointing that out really clearly.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? So that friendly amendment has been added to the, um, fate, to the motion to revise our current utilities bylaw. Um, I'm not going to try and read it all again. I think everybody has it. So if we're ready for the question, all those in favor? Two, three, four, five, and opposed. One, two, three, four, five and four, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Alrighty, so we're going to move forward on to bylaws and the item we, for, for discussion is seven point one, which is on page one seventy-seven of your agenda package. The recommendation here is to give second reading of bylaw zero zero three, twenty twenty-five road closure within lot one, block one, plan one-one-two-three-one-seven-four and lot two, block one, plan one-one-two-three-one-seven-four, as well as to give third and final reading of bylaw zero zero three, twenty twenty-five road closure within lot one, block one, plan one-one-two- as well as to give third and final reading of bylaw zero zero three, twenty twenty five, road closure within lot one, block one, plan one, one, two, three, one, seven, four, and lot two, block one, plan one, one, two, three, seven, one, four. Counselor Tamsik, it was a, it was a draw. Counselor Tamsik would like to proceed to give second reading of bylaw zero zero three, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? We're ready for the question, all those in favor? And no opposed? Okay, the second reading, pardon me, has passed. Because we don't need, we don't need unanimous consent, perfect. So to give the third reading, Counselor Cromwell would like to give third and final reading of bylaw zero zero three, twenty twenty five. There's no further discussion, all those in favor? And no opposed? Awesome, nine and O. Thank you. Next item is seven point three, bylaw zero zero seven, twenty twenty five, road closure southeast thirty four, sixty five, twenty two, west of four, page one ninety one of your agenda package. The recommendation here is to give first reading of bylaw zero zero seven, two, zero, two, five, located between northeast twenty one, sixty five, seventeen, west of four, and lot one, plan nine, seven, two, four, four, three, eight, as well as to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on May thirteen, twenty twenty five, at nine thirty AM for bylaw zero zero seven, twenty twenty five. Counselor Anderson would like to move that and to give first reading of bylaw zero zero seven, twenty twenty five, as well as to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing. All those in favor? And no opposed, that's nine and O, thank you. Item seven point four, bylaw zero zero eight, twenty twenty five, cancellation of plan subdivision, page one ninety nine of your package. The recommendation here is to give first reading of bylaw zero zero eight, twenty twenty five, cancellation of plan subdivision certificate of title number zero nine, two, two, four, three, four, seven, as well as to give second reading and third reading. Would Ms. Cloche like to speak on this one?
I can, Madam Chair, members of council. So this was a request by the landowner back in nineteen ninety three. They had subdivided a small acreage off of the quarter section and with the development and the regulations around private sewage and all that, they wished to now consolidate both back into the whole quarter section. So it's done by way of bylaw. So the request today, if council so chooses, is to give all three readings so we could proceed with the paperwork at land titles.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions, discussion? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. The administration report indicates that in August of two thousand nine, the landowner requested a lot consolidation. Did this just fall through the cracks, or why is it just coming back to us now? Is what I'm wondering, do these usually take this long?
Madam Chair, members of council, there was a request in two thousand and nine. However, it was not finalized and the landowner reached out to us most recently in wanting to put it back on the table and see if we can finish it. So it, it's not that it was in limbo waiting in land titles or anything, it just did not proceed. So we're moving forward now.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Alright. First reading for Counselor Menz, we'll come to Counselor Cromwell for a second. Alright, so Counselor Menz would like to give first reading of bylaw zero zero eight, twenty twenty five, cancellation of plan of subdivision certificate of title number zero nine, two, two, four, three, four, seven. There's any discussion? All those in favor? And no opposed, so that's nine and O. Second reading from Counselor Cromwell, he would like to give second reading of bylaw zero zero eight, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? No opposed, so nine and O. Is there unanimous consent for third reading? Counselor Gerlock would like to put that motion forward for unanimous consent for third reading. All those in favor? Awesome, it doesn't appear that I needed to oppose, so that is passed, nine and O. So the last one. You would like to give it? Counselor Anderson, you're fine? Okay, Counselor Anderson would like to give third reading of bylaw zero zero eight, twenty twenty five, cancellation of plan of subdivision certificate of title number zero nine, two, two, four, three, four, seven. All those in favor? And no opposed, nine and zero, that carries, thank you very much. Well, folks, we're going to have everything complete before delegation, as we're moving quickly. We have item in new business, eight point one, EV charging network steering commission, committee, pardon me, page two oh six of your package. Then the recommendation here is that council determine if they wish to participate in a northeast Alberta regional EV charging network steering committee as outlined in the attached letter from Mayor Roble. Do we have Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. You know, looking at the network, this is an item that would either be put into grassland and/or wandering river. As such, I would like to have council's blessing to attend that first meeting and actually get some more details before we determine whether we want to be a part of this or not. So my motion right, would be right now to allow me to contact and attend that first meeting, bring a report back to council and then determine should we wish to participate in that or not afterward.
Thank you very much, and I just have a quick question to CAO. Do we know if that meeting has taken place? I noticed the letters February twenty first, and they mentioned in the last paragraph, please advise the Director of Transportation Initiatives if you want to attend our initial meeting. So I'm not sure if that's taking.
I don't know if that next meeting has occurred, but this is not a one-meeting committee, it's kind of ongoing.
Okay. So should we go forward with that initial? Okay, is there any discussion? Counselor Hall?
I'd propose it would be less time wasted in churning if instead we were to defeat the motion that's proposed and, and replace it with one to nominate the member to the committee, and then if it turns out that it's no good, he can come back and, but make the default that we're going to move ahead so that we don't have to come back and spend our time on stuff like this. This seems pretty straightforward, so unless we want to withdraw the motion and move one to nominate Counselor Cromwell to attend, sort of in in perpetuity or until he advises otherwise, I, I'll vote against the one that's on the floor.
Well, I haven't read the motion yet, so it's really not on the table, is that accurate? Okay.
So unless there's objection, Counselor Cromwell, I would move that we nominate Counselor Cromwell to the committee as, as the representative.
Okay.
And then as discussion, if you find that it's not satisfactory, then we can withdraw.
Okay, and you accept the nomination, Counselor Cromwell? Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Alrighty, so Ms. Blair, do you have the, the motion to appoint Counselor Cromwell to the committee? Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? One, eight and one. Thank you. Alrighty, eight point two is next up, sponsorship requests for the fourth annual Aspen View Robotics Tournament. The recommendation here is that council approves a contribution of merchandise up to one hundred dollars for a door prize and or one thousand dollars to sponsor Aspen View Public Schools' fourth annual robotics event and further to source the funds from the grants to organization budget. Counselor? Okay, thank you. Did you want to include the thousand dollars? Okay, so that would be and, and was removed the or? You're welcome. Is there any Counselor Crom, or Counselor Wallach, sorry?
I guess just to administration, is there any pushback to the groups on actually filling out the form for these? Like the grants to the groups, because some people do it, some don't, so I'm just wondering how this works.
Through the charity, Counselor Wallach, there is a lack of a sponsorship policy, so when applicants come, first, we have to look at if they're nonprofit. And as per the grants to organizations, it's solely for nonprofits. So I can't really enforce for them to fill out the form. So I've just gathered the information, and so we are working currently on a sponsorship policy.
Thank you very much. Is there any further questions, Counselor Hall?
It, it seems to me there's a fairly limited reach and a fairly limited opportunity for students from Athabasca County to participate in this. So I would propose an amendment to reduce the amount to five hundred dollars.
Okay, there's amendment here to reduce from one thousand dollars to five hundred dollars in sponsorship? Is there any discussion?
Due to why? What, what, what was the reasoning why? Pardon me?
I did speak to that. It's got a very limited reach, and that's the amendment I'd like to propose.
Who? Limited reach? For students to be able to participate? How, how do we know this?
Chair, are you asking me to respond to the question? There's a very limited reach for Aspen View students from Athabasca County to participate in the event. The, I believe the background and the information that's provided talks about the, the students that come from across the division and in trying to manage the budget. This is a fairly exclusive event, and in my view, a thousand dollars is too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. When I was reviewing the agenda, I noted that we sponsored the hockey provincials that just happened, a thousand dollars. And when I think of the amount of people that partook in hockey provincials, the amount of people that brought to our community and the business that brought to our community, and just incredibly large-scale event that that was. I was wondering where the thousand-dollar recommendation to sponsor this event came from, like, just when I compare the size of the two events, and then the dollar that we are being recommended to sponsor, I was kind of wondering how administration came up with a thousand dollars for this event, when we just sponsored a thousand dollars for something that was significantly bigger.
Madam Chair and members of council, there is really no signs as to why we recommended one thousand dollars. You were asking up to five thousand dollars, and we feel that five thousand dollars was a reasonable request, so we, we suggested a thousand, and obviously it's council's decision as to the value they want to add to the sponsorship. So we just left it open to council to, to decide.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Okay, Counselor Tamsik.
I don't know the way I look at it, you know, it says it's totaling over two hundred participants in there. I mean, it's great to see, you know, with the way technology is going, with all the use of coding and everything else, I think it's an excellent program to run.
Thank you very much, and I'll weigh in as well. I agree, this is an extremely important tournament and one that the students really look forward to. With regards to the difference in size of events, we also have to consider the difference in sponsorship reach for some of these larger events. That really makes a big difference as well. So I would be opposed to the amendment. I believe that, as it mentions here, numerous community spectators, two hundred participants, fifty staff, twenty judges, and this fosters the STEM, fosters STEM, STEM skills, innovation and teamwork, which is, for me, and where we're going in our technology world, this is just extremely important for the students to be able to partake and enjoy this tournament. So I would be opposed to the amendment. But is anybody else would like to have that conversation? Alright, on the amendment, go ahead.
Sorry, just a question for administration. Do, do we know how much the Thorhill County, Smoky Lake County, and the towns of Smoky Lake, Thorhill, Smoky Lake, Athabasca and the Village of Boyle have contributed to the event, given that that's kind of the reach of the, the event?
You're the chair to Counselor Hall. No, we do not at this time.
Okay. Counselor Capitania.
Thank you for the, I really feel that sponsoring events such as this create the opportunities for different, let's say, children and teenagers to excel in different areas. And we all know, not everyone is great at the arts, and not everyone is great at science, and not everyone is great at sports. And I know of you know, young adults that were teenagers once, participated in this event when it was just beginning. And it was pride. They had an opportunity to be showcased, to be to have competition in their skillset, and that was not hockey per se or sports, it was science. And the sponsorships, they go to things like the t-shirts, water bottles, things that give these participants the pride of being in attendance. You know, they're excited, and they're excited to win something, but they're excited to be part of their community. And those sponsorships that create or give out those kind of items, we call it swag, and maybe we think it's silly, but it's something that a teenager or a young person will like, if they're really, you know, feel special because they're the only one or that got that shirt, or the only one that, you know, got that in their team or whatever. But I guess the point is, is just, I don't think it's about size. It is about consistently supporting all activities throughout our, our community, especially with youth. And I also just want to say on a personal note, I don't like to make decisions always based on what other counties are doing. I think that we have our own backbone and we can make our own decisions and set a precedence maybe for some of them. Because if everybody just sat around the table and said, well, I'll do what the other guy's doing, nothing would get done.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on that amendment before we? Okay, so on the amendment to reduce the sponsorship of a thousand dollars to five hundred dollars, to reduce the, to reduce the amount from one thousand to five hundred, all those in favor? One and opposed? That would be seven, I believe, seven and one. So the amendment fails? And we will go forward with the original Counselor Capitania would like to have council approve that council approves a contribution of merchandise up to one hundred dollars for a door prize and one thousand dollars to sponsor Aspen View Public Schools' fourth annual robotics event and further to source the funds from the grants to organization budget. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor? And opposed? One. So we have eight and one. And that carries, thank you. Eight point three, page two, twenty seven of your agenda is under new business, proposed special county council meeting. The recommendation here is that council schedules a special council meeting immediately after the conclusion of the April fifteen, twenty twenty five Committee of the Whole Meeting for the purpose of discussing adjustments to the twenty twenty five budget and meal rate options, and I believe Counselor Hall, that's your request.
I would like to move the recommended, well, similar to the recommended motion with April sixteenth as the date. This, for me, April fifteenth is a bit short notice and it's, budget discussions are important, and I think it's important that all of council should be available, so I actually debated whether we should just table this to the calendar section where we can kind of look at the calendar generally. But the worry that I have is that by trying to cram a budget discussion in after committee of the whole, it will be rushed and won't give us the time we should take to really engage in that, and because of the short notice, there are other commitments that some of us at least have that relate to our work as counselors in the late day on the fifteenth, that would mean having to leave fairly early. So, so I'm, I'm proposing the motion with the date of the sixteenth.
Okay, the date of the sixteenth? Alright, I know personally, as well, April sixteenth is out for me. I already have meetings scheduled that day as well. April fifteenth seems to be a great day for, right after the committee of the whole, because we can make sure we're looking at that, Counselor Anderson?
I think April fifteenth is the appropriate day as well. However, I agree that trying to cram it in after committee of the whole would not be appropriate. And therefore, I would propose that we cancel the committee of the whole and just host a special council meeting that day to, so that our focus for the day is those budget and all right discussions. I don't think it's fair to the counselors around the town. Is those budget and all right discussions. Um, I don't think it's fair to the counselors around the table to try and get through an entire committee of the whole meeting. As fast as we can so that we have time left to have a meaningful discussion there. I think that our focus should be the budget.
I guess, I I think I had a little discussion there regarding being the chairperson of the committee of the whole. Regarding uh the actual meeting and it sounded like there was a delegation um. That was already uh put on the the supposedly put on the agenda, so I guess. Through to administration, uh would that work or or not?
Madam Chair, yeah, there is a delegation to come and speak about your bridge program. Um, if council was uh wanted to have special counsel instead of committee of the whole, we would just, we would uh. Add that delegation to the special council meeting. Basically, we could, we could turn the committee of the whole into. Basically, special council meeting, the entire meeting and um. Just try to keep the other agenda items light, but we do have a delegation that we we'd like to commit to because they want to present a ten year bridge plan to council. For reaction, um and if you wanted to reserve most of your time for budget, we would work around that with whatever council likes.
I would, I would totally agree with that.
Thank you. So it sounds to me like we would remain with committee of the whole or we would just turn it totally into special meeting?
Madam Chair, we we. Would prefer to have special council meeting in case you need to have a vote and provide us really clear direction. Um, instead of the the non-voting structure of committee of the whole, we're getting down to brass tacks on the budget here and. Um, we we probably need some real. Hand raising direction.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so um I guess the motion. Um, who would like to own the motion and then we'll we'll wordsmith it? Did we read the motion? I don't remember reading it. I remember reading the recommendation, but not the actual motion. Did I read the motion back? I don't, did I? Okay, so we will have to then defeat the motion and move on to.
With unanimous consent, we can withdraw.
Okay. Unanimous consent to withdraw that motion? Okay, that is done. So the new motion, does anybody like to have that? Counselor Minz? Would like to schedule a special council meeting on April fifteen twenty twenty five. For the purpose of discussing adjustments to the twenty twenty five budget and meal rate options. Is that satisfactory?
And cancel the committee of the whole.
Oh, pardon me, thank you, and council, can't cancel committee of the whole, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and as long as it's clear to everyone, we will have other items on the agenda other than just budget and mill rate, but uh you don't need that in the motion.
So everybody all on board with that motion? All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And opposed, it's nine and oh, thank you. And we still have some time before our delegates. Um, so we'll pass eight point five. Hang on, I gotta find my other piece of paper. There we go. We will move on to nine point one A, the community event calendars, page two thirty five. Of your package. And I have an addition that I'll throw out there here right away, if I may. Um, on May twenty third, twenty fourth and twenty fifth, the Buffalo Lake Maytee Settlement Gateway to the North. Pro rodeo will be taking place. I believe it begins at five o'clock. On uh the twenty third and continues at two o'clock on the twenty fourth. So anybody else who has an Counselor Chamsik? Uh, April twenty sixth and twenty seventh, uh Grassland Agricultural Society is having the grassland rummage sale from eleven to three. Okay, both days, awesome. All right, does anybody else have any additions to the events calendar? Okay. Is there a motion, Counselor Chamsik, to? Accept? Receive the community calendars as amended? All those in favor? And no opposed, so nine and oh, thank you. Nine point two are our meeting calendars, Counselor Minz?
Uh, couple here, uh, we found out regional waterline uh. Island Lake Waterline uh. Meeting on teams on the twenty third, April twenty third at nine AM. And on the twenty fifth, have a Athabasca Watershed Council Spring Board meeting. At the train station in Athabasca at ten AM.
I'm sorry, what time?
Ten AM.
Ten AM.
That's it.
Okay. Counselor Chamsik?
Um, I believe we have an FCSS meeting on the twelfth, Mr. Gerlock, of me.
Okay. Counselor Cromwell?
County Library Board, May twelfth at six thirty PM.
County Library. Ready? Um, I will also like to add the um April eleven will be the rescheduled ALT tour. So the Athabasca Landing Trail Tour for the southern portion will be taking place on April eleven. Um, I'm wondering, I'm looking at um April twenty second. And I see that we have a multiplex meeting, an MPC meeting both happening at the same time. I I've, of course, Chris does not hear, or Director Wilkinson, pardon me, is not here at the time, but. Would there be an appetite to move the MPC meeting just to be, say, nine fifteen on the twenty fourth before the council meeting? Yeah. Without talking with. April, April twenty second was where the MPC meeting is scheduled, but thinking to move to the council meeting at nine fifteen, just before the council meeting? What do you think? I'm assuming. She she said it's fine? Okay, perfect. So if that's an agreeance um with everybody. Seems to be, all right, so we'll move that one, the MPC meeting to the twenty fourth. Um, the one o'clock is actually community transportation, just in case anybody was wondering what that was on the twenty second. The twenty six, of course, we have the um, the Ukrainian and folk dance uh fiftieth anniversary on the twenty six. Oh, and we have um the Athabasca United Church one hundredth year of service celebration that'll be attending on the May the fourth. Um, I think that that is all that I have. May the fourth uh is the Athabasca United Church one hundredth year of service celebration that I have been invited to attend at Amber Valley Hall. Counselor Cromwell?
I'm going to tentatively recommend that we do the same for the MPC meeting on May the twenty seventh. Move that to nine fifteen on May the twenty ninth.
We should. Unless Ms. Wilkinson has. Objection, but. We can always fix it if it's not going to be suitable, correct?
Or we could just discuss it on May thirteenth, possibly moving it.
Maybe that would be a better.
And then they will have a better idea of.
What files are coming in, yep. Was that satisfactory, Mr. Cromwell? All righty, do we have any other additions? Go ahead.
I don't know if I should ask this or not, I don't know how much of a dust up this is gonna cause, but uh. On April, on uh April twenty sixth, we have a uh. An ask from the uh Ukrainian folk dance there to the Reeve to come and give greetings. And acknowledgement from Athabasca County and uh just wondering if. The Reeve. Would not be. Okay to use, maybe if the tickets aren't done yet, maybe to use two, two of the tickets that. Got sponsored to Athabasca County for the donation. So, just wondering if if uh. It's being that the Reeve has to. Give a, give a uh speech, say greetings from Athabasca County. I think we should sponsor. Being we got some free tickets, I think we should sponsor the Reeve to go.
I understood that there wasn't any tickets required to, for me to go, but I will turn that over to Counselor Wall. I still need tickets?
Yeah, so. Being we got four, yeah.
Use the tickets, just for the seating plan, just.
Are those tickets still available? Yes, okay, so does that work?
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good. Everybody's all, go ahead.
Just a thought for the future, I don't know if we need like a policy or anything fancy, but if we are gonna sponsor events. Um, that come with tickets, perhaps we should assume that uh any elected official that is going to be. Uh, speaking at or giving greetings should automatically have two tickets. It's just seems reasonable. To assume, and then if that person is not asked, then release them in the way that we're talking about, just to make it a little bit more clear.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Thanks. When we went through our council remuneration policy, um, we gave each other, gave each counselor and the Reeve. A budget to attend events like this and to attend different things and so I'd like to say in the future, I think if. We're planning on having the Reeve attend something on our behalf, maybe from that budget, we should be purchasing tickets for the Reeve. So we're not scrambling to hopefully have tickets from a sponsorship available. Um, but that those tickets are purchased in advance out of that budget line. To ensure that not only are they being accounted for correctly, but that they are available. Going this way, it's great if the tickets are available, but had they been given away already, it would. Not be the best situation. And also, this is utilizing. Uh, money that was budgeted for grants to organizations to essentially get an elected official tickets to an event. And so. Um, just looking at the. Image of doing that, um, I think we gave ourselves budgets and maybe in the future we should start. You know, purchasing tickets for those events and supporting them that way as well, to make sure that the Reeve has tickets. Or the deputy Reeve or whoever needs to use them.
Thank you. Okay. So it's, it sounds like it's gonna be delicious. All righty, so with that, does anybody at Counselor Hall?
On um April fifteenth, on behalf of the Greater North Foundation, there's a meeting scheduled with Minister Nixon at the uh late day. Yep. I don't know for sure. But it's late in the day, so.
I don't have my microphone on. Before I do that, um, real quick, I had a uh email come from um Sergeant, uh Staff Sergeant Mark Hall. With regards to the RTOC that uh a couple of our our counselors attended and um. I'll let you weigh in and and you know, I imagine from my understanding, it was an amazing experience. And one that is being uh offered once again to counselors that weren't able to make it that day. If uh anyone would like to attend, to please uh let me know as soon as possible and we'll come up with some dates that we can forward to. Sergeant Staff Sergeant Hall. From my understanding, this is an extremely important um tour, I guess is the best way I can put it. It was, it was more of a tour or, yep?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I thought it was amazing, uh, you know, world-class facility to be able to go into and see how their. Operations work at that level was uh quite enlightening and it was, I would definitely go again, hands down, in my heart.
That's awesome, go ahead.
Going, going through the uh RTOC and 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 the OCC uh. Was the the information and 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 the tour itself, understanding how things go. And and how thing, how action is is uh provided to. All over Alberta, not just in 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 one part of Alberta, this, this is across Alberta. It is, it is an amazing tour. And you can get a challenge coin out of it, and I forgot mine, I was gonna actually show Counselor Cromwell my new challenge coin.
I have mine on my dash still, if you'd like.
And again, the RTOC is a real-time operations center at the K Division in Edmonton and as you mentioned, apparently it is just something really spectacular. To see and for everyone to understand how it works and and. I guess more than anything, where our budgeted funds go to, it sounds like some pretty amazing work is being done, so. Um, yeah, anybody else who's interested in going, uh, please let me know as soon as you can. So with that, the motion from Counselor Cromwell to uh receive the calendars as amended, all those in favor?
And then opposed, nine and oh, thank you so much. We have twenty five minutes before our um. That's saying on twenty five minutes before our first delegate, our only delegate this morning. Do we have time to go into a closed session for um? Thirteen point.
Madam Chair, for sure, we have time.
We have time, perfect. Counselor Capit. Counselor Capitani would like to take a ten minute recess.
We enter closed first.
And we can enter into close first, Counselor Gerlock. Counselor Gerlock, everybody's hands are flying. Counselor Gerlock would like to make the motion to go into closed, please. I think the time is, what, ten thirty five? All those in favor? And no opposed, and with that, we will also recess for ten minutes and. We're good to go. We are back. Thank you so very much. We are reconvening our meeting and we are back to our delegation at five point one of our agenda, agenda, pardon me. The utility collaboration, tantamount solutions. We'll start with um introductions on my rate.
Uh, Rob Minns, Division Eight, Baptist Lake County area.
Joe Gerlock, Rochester Peninsula Area, Division One.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, far north, up to and including Wander River area.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, Grassland, Atmore, Prosperita areas.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Caslin area.
And good morning, I'm Tracy Holland, Athabasca County, Division Five, which is east of Athabasca as well as the Reeve for the county. And thank you for being here today. We also have Mr. Jordan Schenkelberg, who's our Communications Manager. Miss Leah Blair, who's our Reporting Secretary, Mr. CA Obeck. And we have behind you, we have our illustrious Cole Brandon with with our press. And I'm not sure. Member of the public. Thank you very much. Pardon me. Oh, and Counselor Hall, thank you. Um, would you like to introduce yourself? If he's there.
Counselor Hall.
You've already done it. Brian Hall, Division Four.
There we go. Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
There we go.
Thank you.
Much better audio. Perfect. Perfect. Uh, so wanted to walk you through the utility uh collaboration advice, uh business case project that we have completed uh with the county here. Um, I know we've we've been in touch a couple of times around some of the objective setting and things like that. Uh, we've had a chance to uh to finalize that report. Um, and and officially submit it uh to the county. So want to walk you through a number of items here, a quick sort of project background and overview, just how this came to be. Um, walk you through the the core uh sort of evaluation components of of the business case and and those recommendations uh that came out of it. Um, and then leave some some time for questions. We'll we'll try to leave plenty of time for for that. So just as a refresher uh on this project, uh this business case came about um. It was initiated in response uh to to an approved motion from the Aspen Regional Water Service Commission. Uh, that county administration explore um uh transfer of utility operations uh over to the um. Commission. Um, as the county administration was was working through that process, uh they hit a point where they realized it may make sense to pause. Uh, and go through a little bit more of a structured uh evaluation process. And and that's where we kicked off this business case uh process, which is structured uh to evaluate alternatives. Uh fundamentally, that is what the tool is is for. Um, and it helps to uh put a structured approach around, um, you know, sometimes uncertain uh challenges and 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 ways of of going. Um, there was a number of areas that that sort of came to the surface um. Uh, as that sort of initial uh exploration was ongoing um and and. As administration was beginning to explore uh what a transfer uh to the commission could potentially look like. Um, one of those was was a lack of uh validation of financial value. Um, to the county itself, uh but probably more importantly to ratepayers. Uh, it was unclear how uh the. Um, transfer would ultimately uh impact and and support the reduction of of utility rates. Uh, certainly there were some estimations of some uh operational efficiencies that could be achieved. Um, our process uh in this business case wasn't to validate whether or not those efficiencies were uh valid or feasible. Um, but uh, you know, they they weren't substantive enough to to really move the needle, I guess, on on utility rates for for lack of a better term. There wasn't a lot uh that was demonstrating uh an impact to regional capacity. So one of the themes that came out of this study. Um, repeatedly throughout is that one of the challenges is that there is a an excess capacity within the treated water uh system uh within the region. Um, really the way to address that is to bring new users on uh to the service, um and the transfer itself didn't necessarily achieve that. Um, infrastructure risk, uh again, a theme uh that came up throughout this study. Um, particularly related to the sharing of uh commission um and the town of Athabasca infrastructure uh for distribution. Um, so the the transfer of the county's utilities didn't necessarily address that piece. Um, and regional partner commitment. Um, the. I'm sure there's been uh lots of action uh since uh we were heavily engaged in this process. Uh, we'll go through the timelines in a moment. Um, but at the time, uh it was unclear if other regional partners, uh other commission members were going to participate in similar motions to to explore similar transfers. Um, and the county being the only uh member to go through with this, um again, didn't necessarily show. Uh, or demonstrate significant value. So. Um, you know, none of those were necessarily showstoppers, but again, uh created that need for a pause. Um, and a change in how we went about uh evaluating this opportunity. Um, and and so we sort of reframed the problem. Uh, we moved it out of the the specific motion. Um, from the commission and we sort of reframed it around this this question of of how can the county best engage? With regional or external partners to achieve financial or risk management benefits uh for its ratepayers um with its utility operations. And and that opened up a range of potential options uh that we could explore as well beyond the commission proposal. So just a quick review of timelines. Uh, we did kick off this process in September of of twenty twenty-four. Um, got right into it, uh looked through all sorts of background materials. Um, really critical to this process was a jurisdictional scan. Uh, so we're able to carry that work through and and look at a number of different uh jurisdictions that had gone through some sort of transition. Um, some sort of regional collaborative type of uh exercise uh with their utility operations um and learned a lot um from there. Uh, we were um. Came to council uh at the end of October of twenty twenty-four, I believe, um to um establish some objectives uh for this business case process. And then really um at the end of uh twenty twenty-four is is kind of where we we. Put our heads down and did all the the work and um put the business case together, uh went through the various uh pieces of analysis, which we'll summarize for you. Um, including the financial uh analysis, which obviously is is always an important part of any business case. Uh, but certainly for something like this with uh, you know, utility rates being and affordability being so top of mind, um certainly something we wanted to uh put time into. Um, we had drafted the business case by the end of of twenty twenty-four and and we've been working through a period of of review finalization. Um, and now uh, you know, council presentation uh through the first portion of twenty twenty-five. So when we met uh at the end of October uh in twenty twenty-four, um this was the summary of of uh what we took away from that conversation with council. We asked you to uh. Um, identify your vision for the future, some of your priorities. Um, and and certainly there was lots of healthy debate. Um, we didn't necessarily come to uh an absolute uh consensus on that and and that's okay. Um, but we did take a number of of really important pieces away from that. We're able to capture that as objectives for the business case. Um, so first and foremost, um, we heard that asset maintenance has to be prioritized to ensure reliability and safety of utility operations. Um, that's a that's a good one to have. Uh, we we fully agreed uh with that one. Managing utility rates to ensure affordability uh for residents and business. Um, again, heard that is a very strong theme uh throughout this piece. Expanding water services across the county, that speaks to that regional capacity um component that we mentioned uh in the previous slide. And maintaining fair and equal pricing. Uh, there was a lot of good, healthy discussion around this. Um, and there was uh an idea that, you know, we wanted to sort of level the playing field uh around utility uh pricing. And rates uh as much as possible and and feasible. Perfect. These will come back as as a scoring item uh as as we get into the analysis. I mentioned the jurisdictional scan was a was an important focus of of this review. Uh, we talked to a a number of different areas that have, you know, really explored some quite different models and and we were quite happy with with the learnings that came out of this process. Um, so you know, I won't go into them extensively. They're certainly in the report, but we did talk to the MD of Tabor. Um, they uh do their own operations um in internally. Um, interestingly, they hold a contract uh with a local industrial um plant uh that's that's within their boundaries. Uh, and they uh do their wastewater operations on behalf of that plant um in a cost recovery basis. Um, so an interesting piece where they've uh expanded out beyond their sort of traditional utility system. Red Deer County um is contracted with Epcore, um and they have outsourced about as much as they possibly can. And uh they've been doing it for a lot of years and and they've been able to go back out to market and and rework their contracting. Um, and it seems like they found a pretty healthy balance uh ultimately with with that process. The County of St. Paul uh is engaged with two different commissions. Um, varying structures, uh one one is quite interesting. It's it's a waterline coming uh. East from from Edmonton. Um, they're kind of at the end of it. Um, they have a very interesting structure. Uh, they do actually own uh the infrastructure for their portion of of that line. Um, but they don't necessarily have a a full scope of of governance uh control over that. Um, yeah, again, interesting piece. Town of Tabor uh is running their utilities um through internal operations. Um, they had contracted out um and after seeing a proposal for a very substantial rate increase. Um, they ended up canceling their outsourced contract and and bringing it back internally. The Capital Region Southwest Water Service Commission, uh just uh south of of the city of Edmonton with a number of members. Um, uh interesting model, not not incredibly unique, um but from our perspective, very well-run, very strong reputation. Um, very robust planning um and governance processes. From an operations perspective, they do go and uh they allow any of their members to bid on a contract uh to actually operate. Uh, the commission infrastructure on behalf of the commission. So it's it's turned back to members. There's a competitive bidding process uh for that operations piece for the commission itself. So. One of the the things that was so valuable about that jurisdictional scan is it helped us to shape what alternatives were uh sort of on the table for the county in in this process. Um, and we looked at quite a few. Uh, this is this is quite a lot uh for a business case and and it speaks to the potential. Um, that exists in the space and and the different options that are at uh the county's disposal. So status quo um is always valuable to to evaluate in a business case process. Um, you'll know we have adjusted uh on here. We've made some assumptions around how the financial model of of your utility operations could look like in the future. Um, and that's why the adjusted piece is is on there. Alternative two was to look at a. Uh, alternative that that simply focused on regional collaboration, so not necessarily doing anything in a formal governance. Uh, type of manner, um but really just pushing to work together, sharing costs where it made sense, collaborative projects, those types of things. Um, this isn't uh completely uh foreign in the region. Uh, we know there's collaborative projects that that are ongoing between. You know, the county, um, the commission, other members, those types of things. Um. Commission revamp, this would be more in alignment uh with that Southwest Regional Commission structure. Um, where we'd be looking to advocate to the commission to to restructure itself. And move to the type of uh structure where it would contract out operations back to its members. Um. So that is that is an opportunity as as well. County expansion, um, you know, the county could move beyond its borders and look to take in, um, you know, the utility operations of a. You know, not necessarily neighbor, um, but certainly some other jurisdiction, um, either either nearby or or even less so. Um, you know, we've seen, we've seen what other, you know, similar um. Uh, utility corporations have have done uh by moving outside their their borders. Um, it doesn't have to be a regional thing, uh so there's certainly opportunity there. Alternative uh five is working with the commission to basically have them take on an operations contract uh through an outsourced model. Um, so the county would have, you know, would maintain ownership of their utility infrastructure in this one, uh but work for an operations, uh outsource that operations contract. Alternative six is a full transfer uh to the commission. This is uh effectively the proposal that was originally in front of the county um through that motion um from the commission. Alternative seven uh would be looking to the market, uh broader market uh for that operations contract. Um, going out uh basically to to public tender um and allowing anyone to to bid on it. Uh, there's multiple. Players in in the space that that could potentially be interested in a in a situation like that. We had originally explored an alternative eight uh to look at full divestment uh of of your utility um out to an external party as well. Um, when we went through an initial analysis of this, we hadn't seen anything similar out in our jurisdictional scan. Um, and we, it didn't align well with those objectives that we had laid out at the front. Um, so we worked with the administration team to shortlist this a little bit. And get it down to sort of seven alternatives that we wanted to explore a little bit further. So the business case process, this slide is going to be a a little bit uh squinty. You're gonna have to look look closely. Um, there's a lot to fit in here. Um, so the business case process scores these alternatives against a number of different factors. Um, so those objectives that we outlined earlier in the presentation, there's an alignment score uh that's assessed. We look at stakeholder impacts, uh both internal and external stakeholders. Um, so you can see uh stakeholder scoring there as well. We do a. Fairly comprehensive risk uh analysis, um and that includes uh mitigation strategies and rescoring of risks based on on those mitigation strategies. Um, to help evaluate some of the risk uh profiles there. And then we have multiple categories of the of the financial profiles. So I'll walk you through these a little bit more in 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 step here. Alignment with objectives, we did not see extremely high alignment from any of the alternatives. Um, again, that speaks to this theme that. These alternatives. Sometimes struggle to significantly show how it would reduce utility rates and increase affordability. And predominantly, it's because these alternatives are are not doing enough to deal with that regional capacity question. Um, to bring in new users under the service. So fairly moderate levels of alignment across the alternatives, not a lot of spread uh in terms of the scores that we saw. Somewhat similar uh with stakeholder impacts. Um, we saw a fairly big distinction between internal and external stakeholder preferences. Um, from these alternatives. Um, but you know, overall scoring, again, we didn't see, you know, this incredible spread, the the really the the. Piece that stood out is is that sort of outsourced model. There's enough sort of risk and uncertainty with stakeholders that that had a fairly low preference uh overall. From a risk perspective, um, we did see some separation. Um, we did see that full commission transfer as being the riskiest uh alternative. Um, a lot of the risk elements that are explored are are dealing with elements of control, uh the ability to influence risk. Um, so naturally that full transfer over um does lead to a to a higher risk profile. The financial analysis was quite interesting for this, a little bit different than how um these are sometimes conducted. We took the status quo, um and we did do a full ten-year cost projection. Uh, this was based on your twenty twenty-four budget uh figures, which which were the most up-to-date that we had at the time. Um, and we projected out what this might look like. Now. We made some assumptions. Uh, one of those was that um there was a ongoing utility rate uh. Project uh in in flight as as we were working on this, uh and we did make some assumptions that there may be some utility rate reductions. Um, hence, alternative one, uh what you see is a negative uh financial profile coming out of that one. Excuse me, sorry. Um, this financial result is shown as a net present value uh calculation. Um, so that takes some of these, some of these costs and revenues that are, you know, up to ten years out, and it brings them back to today's dollars, just to allow us to compare alternatives a little bit better. So that's kind of our baseline. Um, so what we see is we do see a negative uh financial profile even on that status quo. As we work through alternative two with collaboration, we we do have some assumptions around some uh ability to cost share. Um, and drive some financial value uh associated with that. Um, so we do see an improvement on the financial profile there. The commission revamp, the financial profile here. Is assuming that the county would be awarded the operations contract. Of course, that is not guaranteed. Um, but we had to show it uh one form or another. Uh, so this is what this could potentially look like. Um, again, there's a a service contract uh that would be coming back to the county. Of course, there's staffing implications. You'd have to staff up and things like that. So but the offsetting. Um, financial profile is is improved um from what the status quo could look like, again with that caveat. County expansion uh provides opportunity for for some financial value. Um, again, with a lot of uncertainty around, um, you know, the size, scope. Uh, and sort of revenue generation potential of of whatever um jurisdiction would ultimately be um the target uh for this expansion activity. Um, and then we move in, so the the commission operator uh contract is is a little bit worse. Uh, than the status quo. We are assuming uh that the commission would have a a small margin uh built into that, uh so it's a little bit worse than than what the uh status quo financial profile is. Alternative six is is very interesting. It is the best financial profile uh in the analysis. Um, largely because of the county is is simply getting out of the business. Uh, we do have a small staff retention there to support grant writing activities and other things. Um, but ultimately, it's it's handing over, um, you know, what in this financial model is showing to be a negative uh um. Financial value over to another entity. Critically, this has an assumption that there is no um transfer of existing county utility reserves. Um. If that it assumption is incorrect and and those reserves are transferred at their full and current value as of the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, this would become the most negative financial profile uh of the alternative. So. Fairly substantial uh assumption in in there and it does uh involve some risk in in this alternative as well. So fairly substantial assumption in there and it does involve some risk in this alternative as well. And the external operator contract going out to market. The assumption here is that there's quite a substantial margin that the market would want on this. So it ends up being in this analysis with these assumptions, but it's quite by far the worst financial alternative. Naturally, that leads to a risk that there'd be utility rate pressures in such an environment. It is something we saw to a certain extent with the jurisdictional scan as well. Now, normally when we do this, it's quite obvious which alternative is sort of the best approach. And I think what we're seeing here is, that's hard to pinpoint. And it's not necessarily an obvious answer and I think it speaks to the complexity of this environment and some of the competing priorities and challenges that were involved with this process. I think it also speaks to the fact that we have some of these larger regional level types of goals that none of these alternatives really fully address. So where we landed in terms of recommendations coming out of this analysis, we are suggesting at this point that the county does not accept the commission's transfer proposal and instead looks to explore the feasibility of alternatives two, three, and four. So this is the collaboration alternative. This is the looking to the commission to potentially restructure itself and explore what an operations contract back to its members could look like. And it is potentially looking at expansion opportunities for the county's operations, utility operations itself. The business case scope didn't necessarily allow us to go into incredible detail around these. But, you know, so we are recommending sort of further exploration on this. Again, we didn't see that scoring point to one obvious alternative here. But somewhere in these alternatives, we do think there's a positive path for the county's utility operations and potential to influence utility rates for its ratepayers. All of these alternatives come with some uncertainty. The county is not in full control of these. You know, so it does, it does require a lot of advocacy, proposal development, trying to get other partners on board. This isn't something that can be done unilaterally, of course. It takes partners. And there's a fair amount of risk associated with particularly to, sorry, alternatives three and four. One way to, you know, get an expansion jurisdiction is to, you know, cut your costs and give them a great financial deal. While you're not going to see the financial results that that modeling indicated, you know, if the negotiations go that way. So again, plenty of uncertainty, lots of due diligence, lots of advocacy, those types of things that we are recommending for the county. We are, we have a series of other recommendations as well. So we are looking for the county to advocate for new isolated commission infrastructure. We certainly know these are ongoing conversations, but we are calling for a bit more of a structured process to explore what that could look like. We have a recommendation to explore alternate rate model changes for affordability. Again, we are aware that there was a utility rate review process that was ongoing as we were doing this work. This recommendation calls for some other exploration of what this could look like, changing things like, you know, base fee amounts. There's ways to drive affordability by adjusting your alternative, sorry, adjusting your utility rates, not just lowering rates, but changing sort of how they're structured. It's worth exploring what that could do from an affordability perspective and working for kind of different ratepayer categories. Recommendation four calls on the county to develop a long-term capital plan and utility rate model for its utility operations. Typically, what we see, you know, these are full life cycle costed, you know, very technical sort of exercises, particularly on the long-term capital planning. It will involve going and getting sort of full condition assessments of all your infrastructure, doing that life cycle planning. And what we're calling for is to have these studies be full cost recovery, full life cycle plan and then use that as your jumping off point to go, you know, try to achieve grant funding and things like that. But it's always a good starting point to make sure that you've got a fully costed sort of baseline and then you can make decisions from there. Recommendation five calls to explore operational backfill capacity. This is to deal with some of the risks around licensed operators within the county's utility. Our understanding is this work has been ongoing and that's something that administration has been dealing with. So I think we're well on our way with that one. And then six and seven really are about maintaining that strong sort of regional partnership and collaboration sentiment despite recommendation one. So, you know, we do want to make sure the county is an active participant in any service expansion project that's occurring within the region, at least providing support. However that may look, whatever may make sense, obviously, these things would need to be evaluated individually, but making sure the county is maintaining its regional sort of partnership status on that. And recommendation seven calls for a little bit more of a targeted collaborative work with the commission itself, just to conduct some enhanced, very collaborative business and utility system planning exercises. So again, understanding the importance of that partnership and making sure that the county is still a very positive and contributing member to that membership piece. Tried to go through fairly quickly. That is what we had for you as far as the presentation. Happy to take questions on any portion of the presentation or report.
Thank you very much. It's a great deal of information, of course, to digest. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to put forth at this time? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Did any of your analysis include the project that's currently ongoing for the expansion of the waterline? County-owned infrastructure towards the east of our the town of Athabasca?
You will not see that reflected in the financial analysis or sort of any of the current overview. Obviously, we were aware that that work is ongoing and it's certainly factored into our recommendations of still maintaining those, you know, those sort of regional projects and those types of pieces. The other place it came into is that it was, it was on our mind when we were talking about, you know, the long-term capital planning and things like that, that, you know, making sure that these things are fully costed, fully understood and then going and finding grant funding for it to maybe support some of these projects was an example that we had in the back of our mind, but it wasn't the basis for the analysis, no.
Hey, thank you. Is there anybody else with questions? If not, please go ahead.
I see a hand, sorry, on the screen.
Please tie your little hand up there. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. In your research, did you encounter any municipalities that subsidized water rates for out-of-county users or for industry?
That was not a specific question of our jurisdictional scan. We were more interested in the governance structures, ownership structures and those types of pieces. So we asked very high-level information on rates, but we didn't get into details on full cost recovery versus subsidization or those types of things. So unclear. Anecdotally, I think we did certainly talk to jurisdictions where I don't know that they had gone through a full utility rate and long-term capital planning exercise like we're recommending. So I would suspect some of them would have struggled to answer that question had we been that specific. But yeah, unfortunately, fortunately, I don't have a ton of insight on that one.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Counselor Hall? In case I don't want to miss you.
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Everybody's good. Carry on. Go ahead, Counselor Minz.
In your executive summary here, page thirty-six of our agenda, of our, our agenda. Number three has infrastructure risk. A key risk to the entire regional water system is the lack of isolated dedicated regional infrastructure through the town of Athabasca to regional partners. What that's saying is the flow-through through from the water treatment plant to the Cornwall reservoir and then flow through to the vault, right? Correct. Okay, okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much for that.
Pretty quiet, but anybody else with any other questions? No? It's a lot of, go ahead.
It's a, it's a very good report. It's well documented. There's lots of information. You know, it's, it's, the pros of this is, is we can, we can take this and introduce it into our mind thoughts as we go forward with our utility water rate. Utilities discussion on our bylaw and it'll be a, it's a great start for that and I want to thank you very much for that. So.
Appreciate it. Yeah, this is, I think the strength of this exercise is it created a fantastic baseline of understanding for the county and what might make sense. Obviously, our natural tendency is to try to drive to a firm recommendation. It was a very challenging exercise in this. I think the strength of this process is it does leave a very wide window open for the county to explore its options and that could, you know, lead to any number of these alternatives really making sense at some point in the future, depending on things change and that type of thing. So there's enough, there's enough room to play here that I think there's lots of directions the county can go.
Absolutely. I think, I think that, yeah, unless Counselor Cromwell looks like, no, it doesn't. It was, it was going there. But yes, no, thank you very much. I agree. This study is huge and extremely important. And I'm so glad that we went through this process and for a little hard work that you've done to get us here today. And I know for me, I have a little bit more reading to do to completely understand it all. You know, and I will be reviewing the livestream. I'm glad it's recorded because it gives us that time to look at that. And I think with that, thanks again. Does anybody else? Again, last chance. All right. We so appreciate you being here for us today. I just want to make sure, no little hands up there. Okay. We appreciate you being here today and giving us this information and lots to think about. And I'm quite sure we'll go forward here in a few minutes and have a little bit more of a conversation. So thanks again.
Thanks so much for having me. Really appreciate it.
Fantastic. Safe travels. We'll take a five-minute recess, please, folks. Coming back at eleven forty-two, if I can do math properly. Um, I think eight point five of our agenda, the very last item, the utility collaboration tantamount to solution presentation. Page two thirty-two of your agenda, I believe Counselor Anderson asked for this one to be on the agenda?
Yes, I did. I know that the presentation had a lot of information to try and digest. And I just didn't want this to now stall out. So I kind of put this on the agenda to discuss what comes next. Do we want to just table it until another council meeting? So we all have time to digest it and then come back and maybe ask some more questions of administration and keep this going, moving in a certain direction after we can have a little bit more time. Does administration have a recommendation on what to do next already? If they've had more time to look at this, I don't know, but I just didn't want it to stall out here. I thought this has been a lot of information already and we definitely need to move forward in some direction. I just wasn't sure what direction that would be previous to the delegation.
Thank you very much. If, would you like to weigh in, CEO Beck?
Madam Chair, I've got very strong opinions on that. And it has to do with our closeness to an election and strategic priority setting of a new council. So I, what we'd really like to do after the election is sit down with the new council, fresh council, and good luck to you all. And say, okay, here's all the projects on our list. What priority do you want us to do them in? Because I think what has occurred in the past is maybe we've had too many number one projects. When you have too many that are number one, nothing gets done. So I think with the new council, we'd like to sit down and we would rank this one. Where is it in the, in the list? You have a four, the next council will have a four-year term. Is it number one? Is it number eight? Or is it number fifteen? And because a lot can change and there's a lot of other issues. And our issue is just organizational capacity. That's all. And so for us to continue with more work on this, we'd we'd probably have to drop something we're currently working on. So I would say our recommendation is accept it, pick it up again with the new council and discuss it in the strategic priority setting with the new council.
Awesome. Thank you. I think that's great advice. Counselor Minz?
Yes, I think that's, that's great to hear. You know, just to hold back a little bit, we're actually implementing some of this as we go right now with the utility water rate bylaw and, and stuff like that. So we're actually looking at some of the recommendations on there. I feel we're looking at that already. So, so we are